Get it started.
Okay, hello, everyone. Welcome to this June ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Obviously, we are having this meeting virtually. If you, we're gonna mute everyone who is not, the applicant isn't speaking at the time. So if you would like to raise your hand for public comment, use the raise hand function. Or star six, Heather, which I forget every time. Star six, star nine.
Star nine to raise hand, star six to mute or unmute.
There you go. All right, and we are gonna go ahead and get started. So our seven PM, Robert Drake on behalf of Emerson Hospital, Robert Drake, are you here? Yes, I see you. Robert. We see your name, we do not hear you or see you.
By the way, Elizabeth, do you need to take attendance?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Roll call vote. Theo, you're the new chair. I appreciate it. All right. Roll call vote. Sorry, Mr. Faya.
Here.
Mr. Kindermans.
Here.
Ms. Akers-Moore, here. So that gave us one more second. Robert Drake, still cannot hear you. Heather, do you have a phone number? Oh, wait, connecting to audio. This is looking promising. Ah ha.
Did see his name a couple times on there, so I don't know if there's some technical issue.
Oh, yeah, I see you twice. Do you wanna try?
Hello, did you do?
Robert, try saying something one more time. Up, up, there we see you.
Little slow tonight, I'm sorry. I was struggling. Hi, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so what we're, we're looking for today is to extend or renew our special permit to, for a docking station at the, right outside the ED for our MRI and mobile CT truck in the need of a, of an emergency. We, that's where we would dock the truck. So we're here today to renew that, that permit if possible.
Okay, so it's only, only in the event of emergency. Have you, have you done this yet? I mean, I know you had the permit, but have you actually used it?
Yes, we've used it a couple times. Whenever we've done work on our existing equipment, we'll bring in a mobile unit and take our existing equipment down to make repairs.
Got it. And are there any changes to the setup as you had it in your previous permit?
No, it's exactly the same.
Okay. Paul, I don't know if you know this, but have there been any issues with this?
No, they have not. We've had no complaints or any issues with it.
Okay, great. Um, any questions from the board?
Just, just how long, how long have you had this permit for already?
Um, it's, it'll be right at ten years.
And ten years is the maximum we can grant it for. Um, other questions from the board? Okay. Oh, I see Tom. Hi, Tom.
Good evening.
Um, let us then go ahead and open to public comment. If anyone has any public comment, raise hand function or star nine on their phone. Heather, you see anything? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. I appreciate all the pictures and everything. This seems incredibly straightforward to me, especially since there have been no issues and you've had this for ten years, so I have no problems with it. Anyone else?
Agreed.
All right.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to issue a special permit for Emerson Hospital for the renewal of, the renewal of the special permit for ten years under section five, four, one, four, seven, one, two, seven, seven, two, twelve, eleven point six, and eleven point eight to allow a temporary mobile medical facility within the groundwater conservatory district at one thirty-three Old Road to Nine Acre Corner. But I assume if there were any conditions on the old permit, we would continue them. And.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Mr. Faya?
Aye.
Ms. Akers-Moore, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our seven oh five hearing, Sarah and Bill Murphy. Elise, are you presenting?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Elise Stone, and I am here representing Bill and Sarah Murphy. The project is a Cape style house at three sixty-eight Old Marlboro Road. The lot is, we're in residency, the lot is conforming, it has over ten thousand square feet, and the frontage is conforming. We are here because it is a non-conforming. As you can see here, it's a non-conforming, the front and side setbacks with the structure. The proposed addition is to kind of remove a kind of little side entry and a screen porch, and we're adding to the back, and we're also adding a two-car garage and then a connecting mudroom. And, excuse me, and there will be a room above this mudroom and a bathroom, so that's the proposed project. The existing square footage of the house is fourteen ninety-seven, so it's a smaller, smaller dwelling. And we are getting up to, so our finished square footage is going to be right here, it's well, sorry, I had it right here. So twenty-six ninety-two will be the finished square footage. So the FAR for this lot is thirty-six eighteen, so we're way below the, the allowable FAR. So we are here because we're adding more than fifty percent of the existing square footage. So the existing square footage, if we added that, it would get us to twenty-two forty-one. And as I mentioned, we are going to, our total is twenty-six ninety-two. So we are here because we are over the fifty percent, and we are non-conforming in the front and rear setback. So the additions both are closer than the allowable setback, but they're not as much as, as what is existing there now. So the, the front is, the closest setback is sixteen point four, and the proposed is nineteen point seven, and the closest side setback is ten point eight, and the proposed is eleven point three. So, and you could see on the site plan kind of where those are taken off, you know, where those are. So what is the, yeah, the back right corner, and then the front, you know, the front nineteen point seven is the new proposed closest, but it is still within clo, you know, not as close as the existing sixteen point four, which, which is the existing front left corner of the house.
Got it. All right, just for clarity sake, it was just accuracy sake, so the total existing gross floor area is fourteen ninety-four, I think you said fourteen ninety-seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, fourteen.
That's right. And then I was confused where that, the section four was put down. Does your proposed project exceed fifty percent allowed by right? No, but that should have been yes, obviously. See section four, number two.
Yes, yes, yes.
For accuracy sake. I don't have any questions at the moment. Questions from the other board members.
Where would the driveway come in to take advantage of the two-car garage?
The same place it comes in now. It comes in off Old Marlboro Road. Kind of, it comes in, it's hard to describe exactly, but, so you have the straight section that goes along cottage, and then you go along Old Marlboro. The driveway is actually right there, right where the arrow is now, kind of comes in, and then it goes in the side of the garage.
And is that the real trail?
Sorry.
Is that the real, is that the rail trail behind the house?
Yes, the rail trail is behind the house. I did submit, I do have photographs of the house.
Yeah, we're just gonna take a look at that. Maybe we don't have them up there.
You can see it pretty well on Google.
Yeah, I'm on Google Earth, yeah. Pretty good.
Yeah, the, the curb cut is not changing. Right where the garage is now, I mean, where the garage is going, there's a garden now.
Other way, which way?
It is, it is, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Tom, other questions?
No.
Okay.
So, I have a question, which is, you know, it's like, it looks like the, the garage addition almost fits in the setback, but it's just over the line. Is there, you know, is there a reason why you couldn't quite squeeze it in?
Well, the difference between a twenty-one, twenty and a half to twenty-one foot garage and a twenty-two is really significant for two cars. It's hard to describe, especially when you do have some stairs in there. So when we saw that.
Well, just like the width of the garage trying to park the cars.
To get the two cars in, to open the doors.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, standard, standard two-car garage, you know, by today's standards is twenty-four by twenty-four. So we were extremely happy, you know, when I went and met with Ray, and we kind of were determining, you know, some of the different setback options, you know, he pointed out that the sixteen point four was existing and closer. So we took advantage of that, just.
Okay, so the width is twenty-two or?
Yes, twenty-five.
Okay. And then the other question is, it looks like there's an existing screened-in porch where the other proposed addition is going, but proposed addition has a slightly larger footprint, is that?
Slightly larger, so the existing screen porch is step, is set back about eight inches from the corner of the house. So just took that screen porch and turned it into a room that'd be a jog and what is going to be the family room. So, and really where the door is and the out, I, so our choice was to come for this because we knew we had to do the special permit to get the correct garage size. We decided to go for the special permit for the back because the other thing would be to, you know, take eight inches less in the room to, to kind of straighten the room, you know.
But, but now the addition will be kind of flush on the exterior with.
Exactly, it'll be flush on the exterior, yes.
Okay. All right, those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
I, I got a couple, couple here. Well, one, one question, one comment. Any comments from neighbors about us that we, that we got, or that we didn't get any?
I didn't see any, no.
Maybe.
He, he would only have, I walk this about every day, and they would only have a neighbor on the right-hand side, the, be the north side, because the trail is behind it, the street's in front of it, and down at the point that, again, ends at Old Marlboro, so there's only really one neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, I understood, and I, you know, the, the neighbor is, is familiar to me, so, yeah, always just wondering whether there was anything on file for that. And then the other thing, and that's not, I don't think it's pertinent to this application, is it seems to be that there is a significant encroachment into the rail trail in the back with the fence, and, and it goes over the property line. I don't think that's, that's part of this application, but I just, you know, wanted to note that. And then, and actually, actually also onto the neighbor's property with the fence, but.
Can you show me where, where you're talking about there?
But is that the rail trails fence? Is that a fence that the rail trail put up, or is that a fence that the property owners put up?
I, I don't think that, I don't think that would be a rail trail fence.
Theo, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the site plan, and it says roof over, overhang eight inches proposed, and there is a big line around it, line with, with a dot.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's a fence line, and that, that goes actually onto, onto the neighbor's property as well. And by the looks of it, it's, you know, just eyeballing, and it's about fifteen feet on the rail trail property. But I don't think, as I said, that's something that I wanted to note. And, and, you know, I.
Yeah, no, no, it's an interesting, it's interesting.
Yeah, the Murries have, the Murphys haven't done anything with fencing. That was, they bought the property a year ago. I think.
Two years ago.
Years ago, yeah.
As is.
As is, yeah.
This plan doesn't propose to move that fence, does it?
Correct, correct. And the rail trail is in place, right, Emma, during construction, during construction of the rail trail, that fence was not moved. So, I mean.
Not sure, not sure it's relevant, but I give Mr. Murphy some credit because I see him working hard in his yard.
I'm not sure it's relevant either, but since it's raised, and Tom, let me ask you this, if we're approving this plan, are we implicitly approve it, you know, should we just, any point in mentioning it and?
Mentioning what?
The, the fence, since it's marked off on this plan. I mean, I guess we're not implicitly marking our approval to the whole plan.
Right, 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 right. I think, I think, I mean, the application is to something very specific, right?
Right. How about this, it's now on record. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, any, any other questions? All right, I'm gonna open to public comment. Any public comment? Well, Theo, that answers your question. I'm gonna close public comment. Um, okay, I don't have any issues with this. Like a modest increase, what are we talking about, four hundred square feet, four hundred and fifty square feet over?
Yes.
The allowable. Seems that there's good reasons for your designs staying in the setbacks, so I don't have any issues. Robbie, Theo.
Yeah, you know, I think there's two car garages on many houses in the neighborhood, it's in line with that character, it's, you know, it's not increasing any of the existing non-conformity. And, you know, it seems very, very well thought through and designed, so I'm, I'm good with this.
Can I get a motion?
Sure. A motion to approve the special permit under section seven, one, three, seven, one, five, and eleven, six of the zoning bylaw to construct eleven hundred ninety-eight square foot addition on the existing fourteen hundred ninety-four square foot non-conforming dwelling at three sixty-eight Old Marlboro Road.
Second, I'm sorry.
Object to standard conditions.
Second.
Great, all in favor, Mr. Faya?
Aye.
Mr. Kindermans?
Aye.
Ms. Akers-Moore, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, we are on to seven, ten. Keith Callahan on behalf of the Thorough Club. Keith Callahan, I see you.
Yes, if you hang on one second.
Now I can see you, great.
Great, thank you very much. Um, we're here tonight for the Thorough Club because we are planning on hosting an international women's tennis tournament. It will run August eighth through August fourteenth. The reason we're before the board is because while our property is zoned for this type of activity, it is, it exceeds three days, and that therefore requires a special permit. Players begin to arrive immediately before the tournament. There are typically about ninety players. These are typically the top two hundred and fifty players in the world. We host them at a local hotel, they don't bring their own vehicles, and they are transported back and forth to the club on a daily basis as their games and matches are unfolding. While we start the week with ninety players, the reality is by the time we get down to the semifinals and the finals, we're actually down to twelve, and on the last day, actually only six players. Along with the USPTA, or sorry, USTA officials that are there as well officiating the tournament. The tournament for the last two years that we did run it was telecast worldwide through the United States and throughout Europe. It's a fairly big production in terms of that, in terms of keeping it well organized and well-run, and keeping everything on, on schedule. We pray for no rain during that week because virtually the entire tournament, of course, is outdoors on our tennis courts. Inside the club, the players have their own room that they can go to that is private to them, as do the officiating staff as well. Each day starts at approximately nine AM. It's done typically no later than seven PM. We do not have lights on our tennis courts, and so there has to be a certain level of light to be able to play and meet the tournament requirements. The busier days are the last three days of the tournament, when we are down to the quarterfinals and the semifinals and the finals. We do put bleachers in place adjacent to one of our tennis courts, it's on, on a turf area, turf day, adjacent to what we call will become center court, and on the other court on the opposite side of that is where we host our VIP seating area as well. And because of that, we have limited seating. We do sell tickets for the last three days of event, we can seat about three hundred and fifty people. So that limits the amount of people that can actually arrive. Members are allowed and continue to use the club during that time period. In the latter part of the tournament where it does get busier because the play is, is accelerating, we put parking lot attendants that are directing people where they can park so that visitors that are associated with the tournament park in one area, all of our employees park in another area, actually off-site, so we leave open parking spaces, and then our members are directed to another area so they can maintain access to the club. In the last two times that we ran the tournament, we had no real parking issues. We do connect with Valley Sports at the bottom of Forest Ridge Road, and we have access to their parking lot. We typically place our employees there, and in the event that we have overflow parking and we need to place cars there, we do that, we have attendants doing that, directing people to that particular parking lot. We do hire police officers from Concord PD on those last three days of the event as well, and by able doing so, if there is any traffic issues at the bottom of Forest Ridge, they can manage that. The last two times we ran the tournament when we did this, I did check in with the officers on duty, and they really said it was very, very minor in terms of people turning into and out of Forest Ridge Road. Court umpires, the only electronics involved in speaker systems is a court umpires do have to have a speaker system because it has to get recorded into the telecast that is happening. We do keep that to a minimum, there's very minimal calling out. All linesmen are just by simple voice call out when the matches are going on, and spectators do have to be quiet during the matches. There is applause typically at the end of a set, or if there's a particularly unique play, but other than that, it's generally actually quite quiet during that time period. Given the time of year, it is also, August is for us our slowest time of year, and that lends itself to being able to manage the parking very well as well. During all seven days of the tournament, we will have parking attendants in the parking lot, clearly marked in bright orange desks. They all carry radios, as do all of the senior tournament staff. They're there to help answer any questions for folks, but also frankly, as a security measure, we have had on, in the past, a couple of car break-ins, we don't want that to happen again as well. During the course of the event, on a daily basis, we are, we are transporting folks back and forth to the hotel. Our staff doing so are looking for illegally parked cars in Forest Ridge Road, which we don't tolerate. We're also looking for any trash that may be dropped, and when they notice these things, they call into some of the facility staff to resolve those particular issues. If we had people parking illegally on Forest Ridge Road, frankly, we would simply tow them. We do work with the Concord PD, and we place no parking signs up and down the side of both sides of the road, Forest Ridge, and I think that helps actually quite a bit during that time period. We host a players' party inside our outdoor pool area, typically around Tuesday or Wednesday of the event. Members are invited to that, and public is invited to that. It's a paid-for event, it gives them an opportunity to mingle with the players. It actually was very, very popular in the last two events that we ran. We typically are wrapped up and out of there by ten o'clock at night because these players have to be on the court the next day, and they are high-performing athletes, they're watching very much what they consume, and how late they stay out to be able to get back on the court the next day. Once the event is over on Sunday, the fourteenth, it typically will end by two in the afternoon. It's only a single, singles match and a doubles match that day, and then we begin breaking down everything and getting it ready to take offsite, so most of the stuff is disappearing offsite on, on that Monday, which would be the fifteenth. In addition to the actual event, we are also seeking to put a temporary banner at the bottom of Forge, Forest Ridge Road for the three weeks, two weeks leading up to the event, and the one week of the event. That banner would be three feet by seven feet, it would be temporary. I looked at that space again today just to see the best probable location, and I think the side of the street that has the Forest Ridge large sign makes the most sense so that it doesn't interfere with the stop sign on the opposite side of the road. There is a VIP tent that we put up as well for this event, it's only used on Saturday and Sunday, the semifinals and the finals, it's really there to host for our sponsors to have a place to get away from the tournament and have a bite to eat and relax. We do put televisions in there so they can watch the, the tournament remotely when they're watching it as well. So that's the basics of how this thing happens. Typically, what happens at the beginning, as each player plays their first match, as soon as they lose their match, they literally get a van back to the hotel, we shuttle them back and forth. We have three vans running during the entire program. They pack their bag, and they're on an airplane back out of the country, wherever they're headed at that point, they don't hang around. Very simply put, the reason for that is we are obligated to pay their hotel room until they lose. And once they lose, the hotel room is on their nickel, so they're out of town pretty quickly. So that's the basics of how, how the program runs. As you know, we've done this twice in the past. We have a very big staff that manages this process, we have a lot of volunteers involved in the process as well. We have to be very compliant in many ways with the Women's Tennis Association. As an example, we have to have a doctor on site for all hours that the tournament operates, have to have physical therapists and massage therapists. I have met with Ron Holsinger from Concord PD and reviewed the parking protocol, emergency protocols, et cetera. I've met with the fire department and reviewed those protocols as well, and having an ongoing dialogue with the protocol with the captain, Whitney, I believe it was, of the fire department, and looking at having an ambulance on site on Saturday and Sunday. He's just getting me some final pricing on that, and we did talk as late as, as recently as this afternoon. So I'd be happy to field any questions that you might have, and to help understand how this thing unfolds, and then what goes on during the event.
Great, thank you. I have to say, I thought this was really well thought through, organized, and comprehensive application, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. That being said, I have to ask, was this never permitted before through the zoning board?
It was not.
Okay, so this is like they came up with Ray, or?
Yes, the short story is, is I had written a letter in March of twenty nineteen when we ran the first tournament. Wasn't clear to me to who to address it to, and I ended up addressing it to Ray Matty. Ray didn't quite know what to do with it. We called in a gentleman by the name of Kevin Hurley, many of you probably know Kevin, to help us understand whether or not a permit was required. Kevin did some research, worked with Ray, a determination was made as it fell within the purview of our regular permitting that had been done when the building was built in nineteen ninety-eight, and so Kevin wrote a letter to Ray, copied me, and said, you don't need to put special, special permit for this event, but you do need to be sure to permit the tents and the bleachers and the food and beverage, and so we proceeded with that.
Wow, well, I'll make sure to mention that to Kevin next time I see him, that he didn't read the whole bylaw.
Yes, I did already, thank you. And in the second year, it flagged because our food and beverage folks that were providing the food and beverage pulled permits. That got sticky because they weren't frankly as organized as they needed to be, and then the red flags went up, and we had to scramble to get a lot of stuff in place to make it happen. So after the tournament ended, I began a process in the fall of, of last year of twenty twenty-one to reach out and figure out what needed to happen in the permitting process. That resulted in a letter being sent and, and meeting with, I can't remember, at the time she was the assistant in the town, town manager's office, and that prompted another follow-up meeting with Ray Matty and got us underway, and that subsequently resulted in the application you see before you.
Did, did you have a sign? Well, that would have gone before us too, and we didn't get that either. Okay, so there was.
I'm sorry, a sign?
A permit for the sign.
It was in the original application, I believe. However, we have not mocked up yet what that sign is going to look like.
Okay. Um, okay, so all of that being said, and how we got here, as I mentioned, I think this is very comprehensive. I don't have any questions at the moment. I will throw it to the board. Any questions?
So you said there were, the last three days were ticketed, are the first four days also ticketed, but the attendance is just later, or?
Yeah, they are not ticketed, and the attendance is almost zero at that point. We might have ten or fifteen or twenty people who show up and sit in the stands. What's happening is the, the center court where the stadium seating is, it may not even be used during the course of the beginning of the event, we try to keep it very decent. the, the center court where the stadium seating is, it may not even be used during the course of the beginning of the event. We try to keep it very neat and tidy. It, it, this year it won't be, but historically it's been freshly painted in literally days leading up to the event. So we're trying to keep all of the scuff marks off of it. So the only place to see the other tournaments that are the other. Excuse me, matches that are going on are on the back courts. And frankly, there's very limited visibility and we don't allow anybody else back there anyway for security reasons. So there's not an awful lot of opportunity to see stuff in the first few days of the event. As we get a little bit closer to days four, five, six and seven, we start moving some of the matches up front as well.
Other questions?
No, no question. I just want to echo what you said. This seems to be very well thought through application.
Thank you, Theo.
Yeah. And I'm taking you at your word, Paul. You haven't heard any complaints about any of these events in the past. Heather, anyone?
No, I, we have not from the building department. It seems to be a well on the tournament action.
Great. Um, great. Tom Swaim, do you have anything or I will?
I do not. Nope. But I, I reviewed it carefully, but no, I have no questions.
I'll go ahead and. Approve? Can we approve a sign without seeing a mockup? Just based the size, I guess, and description of the location.
So let's look.
I can tell you the general sign is going to have our logo on it and it's going to have Thro Tennis Open and the dates. And that's about it.
Okay. And it's, it's going to be kind of like a polyvinyl.
Yeah.
printed.
Exactly.
Dicked up or something? Okay.
Correct.
I think if we were limited, what'd you say, three by seven?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And it's going down on the Sunday?
It goes, yeah, we'll take it down as we start to break down on Sunday evening. We'll be pulling a lot of that stuff down and getting it packed up, ready to go away.
So I guess, I guess probably to your point, what we would be granting a variance for in this case would be for that temporary for the time period. We're not saying you could have lights or anything on it. So we're not waving everything in the bylaw. And then if this, we kind of clarify what the size is, I, I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
Doing that. Okay. Let me go ahead and open up to public comment. I know we, I should mention, we received one for one letter from Tina Cantu in support of the application. Any other public comment? Okay, I will close public comment. I think we've said all that we need to say. You have a lot more permits and things to figure out besides our board, but I'm comfortable with the application in terms of what we need to grant. Which is the special permit for the seven days, correct? And the sign. Any other comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit on the for the, the Thro Club. And let me just get this straight here. Special permit on the section five, four, five and eleven point six for the duration of the tournament. Seven days and then variants on the section. Three C two of the sign by law. For a sign. That is going to be, what did we say, three by seven?
Three by seven, yes, sir.
Three, temporary.
Sorry, Theo, just to that point, I guess I would just like to point out that's what we're saying in this case under that section three C two. B is that the Board of Appeals determines the circumstances involved with the particular sign were not contemplated by the bylaw. As in they did not contemplate a seven day tournament. Just to put that on the record.
Good, good.
Sorry, continue. Section three C two.
And three C two of the zoning by law to issue a variance for a sign. Temporary sign for the duration of seven days, right? For placed at the intersection of at the beginning of the driveway of the Thro Club. And it's a three by seven sign. With, with the logos, with the Thro Club logo, the duration of tournament and the name of the tournament.
Could I correct that vote? I think it's a three week sign.
That is correct, Tom.
I say a different time period. Sorry about that. Three weeks.
Okay, three weeks.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Great.
Thank you. Well, if you, if you want to see some great tennis.
Voted yet, so.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Acresmore, I. Not that there was much you were going to say that was going to change our vote, but.
No, no, I understand. I was going to say, it's some truly great tennis. These, these athletes are fair. They just are amazing. And I really do encourage you folks to, to, if you have an opportunity to come by and, and see it, it's pretty impressive. Thank you very much.
That's great. Well, good luck with it and all of the organization that goes into it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to our seven fifteen, Lynn Wilson. I see Lynn. Hi Lynn.
Yeah, how are you?
Good thanks. How you doing?
Thank you. Um, so as you all know, I've applied to the town for special zoning permit, section five, three, four to bring my little mini pony on to twenty eight Cambridge Turnpike in Concord, which is just over two and a half acres. And I believe you have all my information and would love to know what you all think.
Okay, uh, we do. I think what's under five, three, four, what sticks out to me is the first requirement that we may authorize a stabling or boarding of horses in a residential district on lots of less than five acres, provided that the written consent of the owners of all lots within three hundred feet of the stable are filed with the board. I do not think we have those.
Okay, I, I've only gotten one back so far as a positive. So they've been, I did mail out the butter letters.
Okay. Heather, um, protocol on this.
Um, you're the one that got back so far is one eighty-one, which is directly across one eighty-one Lexington Road in the, in the positive. Emailed to me. I either gave them my physical address, email, or the town's physical address and or email, so.
So I guess the question is whether we move on this before those letters are received or whether we have to have them in hand.
Think you would have to have them in hand.
Because I agree with that because it says file in written, the written consent with the ZVA. So I agree with that, Hillary.
Okay, so I guess then what would be the probably the best thing to do is to continue this with the applicant's consent. To make sure we have all of those in hand. Heather, have you worked with the applicant to figure out the three hundred, who the butters are within three hundred feet?
Yeah, yes, I did. We see that a little less than two weeks ago. And my question is, as it we are listed in the paper for the several weeks and you have mailed out the letters. Is there a timeframe where if you get no response that we can move past that?
Not that I see. I think it, that's part of granting this is that we would have to have those consents in hand so that a lack of lack of any communication would not be read as consent.
Okay, is it something, this is new to me, so excuse my, I'm just gonna.
New to us too, kind of, at least new to me.
You revisit or re, do you literally go knock on a door or do you re-mail something after two, three weeks or? How would you?
So officially, I mean, I guess that would be up to you.
So I believe six of the parcels are owned by the town, either natural resources, light and or fire. And then the other ones were residents. One was a trust, which I don't believe might not even be anybody living there. It was a trust which and then the other ones were residential. One or two of them are on the market. One of them is the one that I got the note saying, you know, in the positive. But, um, yeah, I mean, I don't want to specifically get in anybody's business about, you know, I know they, they need to either respond yes or no and if people are just not like willing to get involved or then I'm then we go from there.
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying. We're kind of, we're, I mean, unless there's something that someone wants to bring up that I'm missing, anyone on the board, I think that that's those are the rules that we have to follow. There's, there's nothing for us.
Okay.
So we should. On it, but the, the town should be able to get Heather. I mean, I'm sure you can help with the getting in touch with natural resources and.
Those, those are all mailed to even though they're the town, obviously. There was one in specific that I believe the address was more or less like in a trust and I don't even know if anybody's at that property. So, you know, I guess we can just wait a little bit longer. And go from there, I guess. I'll just.
Yeah. Continue on. Does anyone else on the board have any? I mean, that's, that's my thoughts. There's, there's nothing we can do with.
Right. I, I, I think, I think it comes, you know, I, I, I think it comes down to some good old fashioned door knocking.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, just, just, just asking people and, and you know, you might, you might want to write up, you know, just please, something that, you know, you give somebody and then say just that they have to just sign it.
Right.
Whether it's in a petition format or, or whether you, you type up a little statement.
Yeah.
Make, make it, make it very easy, you know.
Sorry, can whoever that is mute or can you mute them?
That's a great idea.
Can you mute them?
My, my other question, when I put on the individual, individual letters, I did put their lot or parcel number. Is that necessary or basically just their name and address?
Um.
A lot of.
Be helpful, right?
Yeah.
It would be very helpful. I mean, this is basically a box that needs to be checked that we receive them all that we look at it and then we go on and consider the application. So we're not even getting to. Where we are saying anything about the merits of it. So if we can get past the administrative part, then we can talk about it. So I don't know whether you want to continue it for a month. Do you want to do two months? That's up to you to ask for.
I'd, I'd like to continue for, for the one month.
For the one month. Okay.
We can always go longer again.
Yeah.
But, but you know, going into July and August, people on the, at the house is awesome. So
True.
Sooner rather than later.
Yes, I see a hand up. Do I, public here? I'm going to go ahead and open it, Heather to, yeah, so who, whoever has your hand up, I just see nine, seven, eight, three, six, nine, two, zero, nine, nine. If you now want to unmute. Hello?
Yeah, hi, I've, I've been, your software is not very good. I, I am in a butter, I believe. I, I just got a, a letter just yesterday, I think it was. So I, I didn't have time to to write anything, but I am all for allowing a horse. I don't know if you're waiting for more than just me. I'm apparently parcel zero, two, two, dash, one.
Your name and address, please.
Just your name and address.
It's Jeffrey and Amy Guy, one, four, five Lexington Road.
Okay. Um, so again, we will need something written and filed. So, so Ms. Wilson, if you want to follow up with.
I'm sure will. I wrote that down. Much for calling in. I appreciate that.
That's great. Thank you.
As I say, I, I just got this. So I, I mean, I got the notice about the meeting, but I didn't know that you were looking for anything written until yesterday. So.
Okay, I will come by and introduce myself and we'll go from there. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay. That's good. We're making progress.
Another one.
So we, the next meeting, do we want to set a date and time? For the continuance. What is it? July?
July fourteen.
July fourteenth and you can do it right at?
Seven oh five?
Seven, seven o'clock is fine.
Seven o'clock.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, hold on one sec. We're just going to hope, go ahead. We have to vote on that. So.
Continue the application of Lynn Wilson for a special permit under section five, three, four and eleven, six of the zoning by law for the stapling and boarding of courses. At twenty eight Cambridge Turnpike until July fourteenth at seven PM.
All in favor, Mr. Faya? Oh, wait, second. Sorry, you didn't.
Second, second, second.
Mr. Faya.
Hi.
Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Ms. Acresmore. That's great. We'll see you in a month.
Okay, thank you so much.
So, so point of order here a little bit said it means that Jim needs to watch this video recording, right?
Yes. Yep, just that one public hearing is all. So I'll get that to him.
All right, that's great. Moving on to seven twenty, Greg Graham, Latitude Architecture. Mr. Graham, hello.
Evening.
Hi.
I am representing thirty-five Bellknap Street. And the Steiner family, they're a local family that have purchased this house and are modifying it to bring the matriarch closer to home. The lot is currently non-conforming. It violates the front yard setback and both side yard setbacks. It does have a two-car garage on the property and that one of the first things that we're asking for is the client would like to add a link joining the garage to the house. It is open air. It is a very shallow roofed structure. That will provide cover from rain and snow. From the, the garage to the house. The, on the first floor, we're asking to add a total of twenty seven point three square feet. To the east, we're asking for fourteen square feet. You can see there in that blue box there, we're, we're just asking for a little bit of square footage addition to square off the plan a little bit. We're going with an open plan, which is, seems to be the way of the day these days. I would like to add that the front corner of this house is the closest. You might want to pull up the plot plan. It is, it is the greatest violation, if I can use that term, of the setback. Um, that's existing.
It's actually on the other property, right?
What's that?
It's actually on the other properties. Is that not correct?
No. What's on the other property? No. There you go.
Uh, this is Paul Flugfelder, fifty-three Bellknap Street.
Thirty-five Bellknap.
Fifty-three.
Thirty-five.
So it's, it's. You're still muted, Elizabeth.
So you can see that where it says proposed addition in the kitchen. That is setback from the lot line is currently twelve point nine feet, but the front corner to the northeast is twelve point five. So we're, we're not my point, the, the, the point that I'm trying to make here is we're not increasing the setback violation. You can also see to the northeast, the link that I mentioned earlier and that also we actually went through a redesign guided by Paul Creedon to not violate the five point four setback that is determined on the northeast corner of this existing garage. So we're meeting that setback that was approved previously with this link element. On the front of the house, where it also says proposed addition, we're actually asking to add a little bit of a bay. And that is adding eleven point three square feet to the footprint. And the purpose of that is we are adding an elevator to the house. And so that's allowing for ease of entry and exit to the elevator. You can see that on the first floor plan when we get there. The fourth thing is the deck and it's really, it's a landscape element, but it is in violation of the setback. If that is, I, I, you know, we've done terraces before that are not that do not, do not have to honor the setback, but we decided to add this to the special permit just to make you aware of what we're doing. This is a landscape wall with an infill of a deck, if you will. On my submission, I do talk about adding two hundred and twenty-four square feet to the second floor. The bulk of that square footage is because we're raising the plate height. And so now the square footage that is there that is not currently counted because it's below the height requirement, we're raising the plate. Basically from six feet to seven foot six. And so now we have to count that square feet. And so that increases the total square feet to the house by two hundred and twenty-four square feet. Um, the FAR allowed currently for the lot is thirty-eight, twenty-six. And with all of the additions that I just talked about, we're at thirty-six, forty-five. So we're still under FAR.
And so you're thirty-six, forty-five and you are, I'm just trying to see how much you are over the hundred fifty. Where are we on that? Just want to have that number more handy than I do. Have that number more handy than I do.
We're not even close to.
You're not even. Okay.
It's, it's a non-issue.
Great. Um, okay, and let me go ahead and open to the board. Any questions?
I'm all set.
Tom, anything?
No, no, I have nothing.
Great, let's go ahead and open to the public.
So.
Uh, can you please introduce yourself again?
Yes.
I'm with Latitude Architecture.
No, sorry, not you, Mister Flugfelder. You could introduce yourself and state your.
Yes, yes, I'm in the, I'm the neighbor on Bellnap Street.
Okay.
And your name is, and your address?
Fifty-three Bellnap Street.
Okay.
Felder, Debbie Conkey.
Great. Go ahead.
I'm just curious, is, uh, so with the garage in the breezeway, the garage is, I assume was built that way to make it conforming? But the breezeway connects it, so it's no longer an auxiliary building? So does that make it non-conforming?
It's, the, the link element is open air, so I don't, I don't believe that it, it violates the, the con, the conforming.
Well, it connects it, right?
Yeah, it does connect it, yes.
So if it's connected, does it make an auxiliary building?
It's not conditioned space. It's not enclosed space. It's more of like a, a landscape feature, if you will.
Right, the fact that it's connected wouldn't make it an aux, uh, an auxiliary unit. Um, and you're not applying for an auxiliary unit, so it's not an auxiliary unit. It's a garage.
Hold on a second. So definition of auxiliary unit?
Sure, Heather, do you have that?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a unit. It's, it's a garage, right? It's not habitable.
Auxiliary, whatever.
Okay. So the, I, I guess I'm not following your question. By putting an open connection between those two buildings, is he now in violation of zoning?
Well, no, no. Let's step back. So the previous owners built it that way to make it compliant. So if you connect it to the building, does it make it not compliant? That's the question.
Not even quite sure where to start with this, but the previous owners didn't not connect it in order to be compliant. I'm not sure where.
Are you sure?
What, well.
Well, what the previous owners thoughts were, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think matters in this case. But what, what matters is what before, right? And, and, and hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
No, 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 I agree.
Theo, you wanna finish your thought?
Yeah, no, I, I think what he was after is like, well, we have a, uh, an auxiliary building, you know, a, uh, and then um separate from the main building. And now by connecting it does it all become main building and are there different setbacks for that building then?
Thank you.
I think that's, that's, that's the thought process.
Exactly.
I see. Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I was not articulate before.
No, no.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay.
So, alright, so let's uh start with the set. First of all, does connecting the building make it part of the main building? Um, I would say no. Anyone else wanna follow up on that? It's a, it's a walkway between the, the two structures?
I, I think that's an interpretation for the building inspector. I've seen, I've, I've seen it, you know, in a, through experience in different uh towns, I've seen it uh both ways, so.
Uh, Paul, are you on still?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the, the garage, as it stands right now, is existing, non-conforming, a garage in that situation in the front. When it's forward of the rearmost portion of the house is required to be, is required of the setbacks of the main structure. So that would be, excuse me, twenty front, fifteen sides and thirty rear. So it's, it's already non-conforming. I don't know when it was built. Maybe it was conforming when it was built, but the garage itself is non-conforming right now.
Oh, the garage was built not that long ago.
But it's not.
Yeah, it's there. So then the question is, are we making it more non-conforming by connecting it?
By connecting it, right.
I think if it wasn't an enclosed conditioned space, certainly, but this is an open air. I mean, one of the designs I came up was with, was a trellis element as well that had a cover on it. I think that this was a little more um in keeping with, you know, proper maintenance, but I don't believe that connecting it with an open air element is going to make it non, more non-conforming. It's not, it, it, there's no way that this could ever be enclosed.
And Paul, when you were looking to issue a building permit for something like a walkway like this, what are you looking at in terms of setbacks and?
Yeah, well, it wouldn't need to meet the, uh, it wouldn't need to meet the setbacks, but in this case, the, the closest setback is five point four feet. The, the, on the, on the, on the northeast corner of the garage. So this, this, yeah, exactly. This, this uh walk, it doesn't come any closer to the lot line than five point four feet.
So, so then continuing from that, what our findings need to be as a board, one of our findings will be whether this increases the non-conformity enough that we're uncomfortable with it or whether we are comfortable with it. So we haven't even gotten into that discussion yet. But um Mister Flugfelder, I think that answers your question, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine. I, it was just a question.
Okay, got it. Alright, well, thank you. Thanks for.
Let me be clear. I'm delighted the folks that have bought the house or they've already started making significant improvements, so it was just simply a question.
Got it. Okay, great.
Terrific.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, let me see, are there any other public comments? I don't see any. Let me throw it back to the board. Uh, closed public comment, and what other questions does anyone have? We've now discussed the covered walkway. I don't have an issue with the covered walkway. And this all seems very minor in terms of um expansion and not significantly more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, in my opinion. Other thoughts? That did work, sorry.
I, I agree with you. I think, and having now heard from at least one neighbor who was positive about this. It's, it's a good thing. I mean, I, I didn't see anything from other neighbors come in, so.
I didn't either. Heather, we didn't receive anything else to be. No, no, okay.
I guess I have a question. Is the, is the kind of current landscaping, which does provide some screening uh from the road of that area between the garage and the house, is that gonna stay in place?
So that. There is a tree that is in place where the link is now, so that's going. Um, but yes, there will be, the screen that you see now, the intent is to maintain. It, it provides a certain level of privacy in the images that I showed you. Um, I think you can see that the link element itself is actually, you're not even gonna be able to see it, because it's.
Right.
Pretty well hidden.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of the point I was getting at as well.
Slowly loading these photos here.
And I think what, what the neighbor had mentioned earlier was that the client has already um started to improve. You can see it's really unkept and the, the client has already started to clean everything up and make it more presentable to the street, especially in the backyard.
Yeah, but I, I mean, you know, there's, there's some, you know, just to the right hand side of the photograph here, some, some pretty big uh landscaping, some pretty big shrubs, so that's, you know, would be nice if those stayed.
Oh, someone is not muted. Bob Tritman, could you mute yourself? Heather, I'm asking you to be very aggressive with muting people tonight. Sorry. Thank you. Um, yeah, Theo, to your point, uh, I don't know what we can put in there, if anything, but your point being the mature landscaping, if cleaned up, would be nice to, to keep for some privacy.
Yeah, yeah.
This, can, I don't, can I, I'm the owner. Can I speak for a minute?
Yeah, just go ahead and introduce yourself and give your address.
Oh, hi, I'm Hillary Steiner and I'm the owner, and I just wanted to speak to.
Hillary, sorry, can you just tell us your primary residence address?
Yes. Yes, I'm at one ninety-nine Nishotic Road.
Okay, great, thanks.
If you can see me, anyway. I just wanted to speak to the landscaping question and in the back, most of the big shrubs there are invasive. And so we'll be replanting everything with a complete screening, but with um natural you know, indigenous plants to this area so they'll thrive. So that's kind of the whole, the whole point. And we will, the intent is to have the same screening that we have now, but with uh plants that are native to this area.
Great.
And if I could comment?
Yeah, go ahead. Just introduce yourself again.
It's Paul Flugfelder, neighbor.
Fifty, what's your address again?
Pardon, fifty-three Bellnap Street.
There you go. Okay, go ahead.
The landscaper's already been there. He's done a great job cleaning up, and it's really wonderful to see. So it's a beautiful house. And I delighted that they're putting money into fixing it up.
That's great. Alright, well, Theo, that should put your mind at rest a little too. So uh, any other comments from the board? Alright, I am ready for a motion.
It's your turn, Theo.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to uh issue a special permit for thirty-five Bellnap Street on the sections seven point one, hmm, point three and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw to construct two first floor additions totaling twenty-seven point three square feet and create twenty, two hundred twenty-four point four square feet of additional living space on the second floor by raising the roof line and construct a breezeway connecting the garage to the house. They said at thirty-five Bellnap Street, uh, standard conditions and findings that uh these uh additions and changes will not uh be a detriment to the neighborhood, as, as was stated by a neighbor as well. And anything else?
Five seconds.
Of goods to me. Great. Uh, all in favor, Mister Kindermans?
Hi.
Mister Faya?
Hi.
Is Acres Moore? Aye. That's great. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Great. Um, oh man, so we are done with everything. Um, we are just on to election of officers, which we all agreed we would have asked Jim and just tell Jim, and he's doing it. But he has to consent to take it, but I don't think he's going to, so.
Yeah, so what do you want to do, Elizabeth? What's your fancy?
As I, oh, right, because if I say you do it, you'll say no anyway, so.
No, I, I mean, I mean, I hate to impose that on you. I think you do a better job than I do. But if, if you wanna have a break, then, you know, I'll be fine with it.
Oh, Theo, I appreciate it. Alright, how about this? I don't mind doing it for one more term. You may have to, I'm not gonna be here in July, so someone else is gonna have to do it.
Jim.
Jim can do it. And you're not there?
You're not there, there.
Have fun someone. Um, do we have, Heather, who is, because Robbie is an associate member, Tom's an associate member, but we only have three full members, is that?
I think all, all members and associate members can vote on.
Can vote, but can they, can be, cannot be officers, is where I'm getting at.
Yeah, no, you have to be a full member, but everybody can vote on this portion of it.
Alright, well, so it's gonna be me and then Jim and then Theo, so the existing, sorry, I'm just switching places with Jim. Is that basically what's happening? So you're clerk, Theo, so?
Um, I don't, I don't mind either way. I can go either way. I mean, I, I, I mean, if I, if I's here, I mean, I'm, I'm not, so I'm not gonna be here in July and August, right? Uh, so those, those two, I'm gonna be missing. So if, if you, if, if I were chair, you know, somebody else would have filled, had to fill in for both of them.
I mean, that's fine, right? Why don't we make you vice chair, because then you're right in line for chair, um, but. Next month, and I'll be back in August, so. Okay, so I guess I just need a motion for that.
Um, well, I make a motion to uh elect Elizabeth Acres Moore as chair of the Z B A for, for one year.
Great, and?
Can you guys all plate? Okay, and um Mister Jim Smith uh as uh.
Clerk?
Clerk uh for the.
Nominate himself.
Alright, Ryan, let's vote on that. Okay, so all in favor, Mister Faya?
Alright.
Mister Kindermans?
Hi.
Mister Swaim, I guess you're gonna vote on this too?
Yes.
Fantastic. Alright, and now Mister Faya, you wanna go ahead and uh make the.
Motion to elect uh Theo Kinderman as vice chair of the Z B A for one year.
Oh, I need a second.
Accepted.
Oh, fantastic. Um, alright, uh Mister Swaim, you mind seconding that?
I second that.
As if this will ever be challenged, but alright, all in favor, Mister Faya?
Hi.
Mister Swaim?
Hi.
Is Acres Moore? Aye. Fantastic. And is that, is that all we have?
That's it.
Jenna, I just again have a procedural question here. The signatures that are needed for these, um, that's gonna have to be Jim, right, for the decisions tonight? Or you, or you want me to swing by, Heather, and sign it?
Why can't you sign it?
Because I'm, because Jim's clerk.
But you.
For the, for the meeting tonight, I was still clerk. Yeah, 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 okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
It's very important.
We just need to know.
All of our jobs are very important.
So we'll keep Theo on for the, for this meeting and then we'll.
We'll change it.
Because, you know, technically, technically, I was still clerk this meeting, right?
Right.
Great.
And again, just let me know when they're done and I'll swing by.
So, alright, so welcome Haley, right? Uh, who I think is still there, hope. Amazing as you thought it might be. Tom, I don't know if you heard at the beginning, Haley's taking over from Heather, because Heather is going to be the admin for the planning board.
Ooh, how could she, how could you leave?
Why would you do that, right?
Right, right.
Now I'm beginning the question.
Oh, man. Um, alright, so welcome Haley. Um, Paul, are you staying on with us past from now on?
Uh, that's the plan. Uh, no, nothing I've heard, nothing officially yet, but I think that's, that's what's gonna happen, yeah. When Ray is, uh, Ray is done in two weeks, pretty much, so. I think you'll be seeing more of me.
Well, lucky you as well to get. Um, no, thank you to everyone, um, and I guess I will see you guys in August, but have a great meeting in July and um I'll talk to you all later. Thank you so much.
Thank you.